What I appreciate, and let's start with you, Shelley, is give me just like one minute, what you bring to the table and what your issues are.
For sixteen years, being in this, in the, here in the city of Oakland, eleven of those sixteen years, I worked for the city of Oakland. I worked with council member Henry Chang, the at-large council member. I worked under two city managers, Robert Bobb and Deborah Edgerly, as well as Gregory Hunter.
And what did you do?
Um, and I'll go, I'll go back. So, for Henry Chang, I worked as constituent liaison and then chief of staff. I ended my time there as a chief of staff. And for Robert Bobb and Deborah Edgerly was executive assistant. And then for Gregory Hunter, as well, I was an executive assistant.
For Bobb, you were what?
Executive assistant. And then Deborah Edgerly, the same position.
Okay, we want to ask you to give us the lowdown on what really went on in that office.
That could be another conversation.
Not that I'm not curious, mind you, but, but go ahead.
So, so, you know, I bring that experience within the city council on how the system works, how the city works, how collaboration is important, how it's needed importantly to be able to collaborate within the city, not only the entities out of the city, but the entities in the city, all of the people, the stakeholders.
And what would you say are your top three issues?
Public safety, economic development, and quality of life. That's what I'm running on.
Noel?
Yes.
Is it Noel or Noel?
Uh, Noel.
Noel, yeah.
I grew up in the city of Oakland. I raised four children. My children are graduates of Oakland High School, Fremont High School here in Oakland, as well as UC Berkeley and Stanford University. And they continue to live in my, in our district, in our city, and they want to do business here. At the same time, I've been married for over thirty years. I've served on the Oakland Board of Education for the last nineteen years. And one of the reasons I'm running is I want to make sure that our neighborhoods return to the, not just the safety level that they used to be, but it, but continue to grow, continue to grow for the next generation. That includes my, my children. And so that Oakland can, can be a city that, that is as spradish as it once was. Now, I've worked with, besides being an elected official, I understand how policy development and how budgets are done, how they're implemented, policy development. And I've also been an employee with the city of Oakland for a number of years.
Doing what?
I served under Jerry Brown. I was the manager for, for the parks within Parks and Recreation, as well as I worked with Public Works as a manager for a number of years. And in addition, I haven't worked with school districts in San Jose as a business manager. So what I bring is not only the experience of serving, but an understanding budgets on the inside and out, and as well as policy development. The three issues for me are very clear. They are very clear to my residents. Certainly, you know, public safety is number one. Secondly, is economic job development.
Hold on, hold on, timeout. Uh, tell you what, wait, wait, you're gonna screw up my order. Let's everybody move down.
Can everybody move down?
To keep my notes straight. I'm sorry.
Hi. We're gonna move down.
You want me to move down?
Yeah, everybody can move down.
And that's only because my notes are in a certain way that...
It's ridiculous.
No, can we move down one this way? And we need you to come down right there.
Here.
I'm sorry. So, public safety, economic development, job creation, and the third one is to continue to, continue the growth in our public school system, which deals with the quality of life in our neighborhoods.
So, my name is Mario Juarez, and I grew up in District Five. I went to the local schools there from elementary when Hawthorne was Hawthorne on Twenty-Eighth, and that's where I grew up, on Twenty-Eighth Avenue. I went to Simmons when Simmons was Simmons, went Thirty-Fifth, and Fremont High. I'm a father of four. My youngest son goes to a local school, Comans, and needs a seat there. I own and run a local real estate company in the district. It's a small mom-and-pop shop. We operated that company for about eight years, nine years now. And we manage, you know, about twenty-nine agents and a few other employees. To me, it seems that the issues are clear. What I bring to the table is this sense of urgency that we have to address, the most pressing issue in Oakland's time, the issue of safety. You know, it's not every day that you get to go to a funeral for a five-year-old in any city, and only weeks before that, you get to attend funerals of one-year-olds and certainly the ones of three-year-olds, only a few months before that. So, that sense of urgency and developing policies that talk about how to make sure that we move Oakland forward, make it a safer city, includes the expansion of our police force to adequate levels, thousand to eleven-hundred officers. The policies that talk about how to get Oaklanders, our high schoolers, to fill those jobs, that's what I'm intrigued and working towards. Secondly, trying to address who is most of the folks who are committing the crime in Oakland. Unfortunately, it's people coming back from prison, people who are currently in probation, and those are where the focus and the attention needs to go. And ultimately, as a, as a city council member, I think it's the role of the city council member to function as, you know, as an advocate for funding to school programs that prevent dropout rates. This is what you're getting. Out of every ten students in Oakland, four of them are dropping out. And it has a direct correlation with the lack of funding to the programs that keep kids in ball.
Okay, so, let me see. Is that, that's a, the school thing is a third issue of yours?
It's a third issue.
Okay, and what is it? What?
It's safety first, and safety first adds to three elements. The policing policies and the redirecting of the, especially the WIB money, the federal investment board money, instead of twenty levels into one level, which is parolee's and probationaries. And finally, the, the ultimately goal will be to prevent crime from committing and from coming into Oakland by making sure that our students, our kids, our graduates are actually finishing school. And, and bringing the dropout rate from forty percent to something more manageable, like the state level. You do that by making sure that you're engaged and you fund programs that keeps kids in schools. There are some high schools in Oakland that do not have sports. I don't think that we have any...
All the schools have sports.
A ride school doesn't have sports.
You think this is the city council's role?
I believe that it, the funding of those, as correlation of, if you fund those programs, if you have those programs, it will bring, it will bring the, the engagement of the schools together. And ultimately, you know, the financial accountability of the city. You know, we have some, some major catastrophes waiting to happen in terms of the, the pensions that the city has, and I think those need to be addressed.
Okay. I'm not quite sure how that fits into your top three there, but...
No, no, it's, safety first is one. And so it has those three levels.
Safety.
And then financial accountability. And it talks about how to make sure that we raise the funds and how do we budget for making sure that we have a secure city, economic, physical city, and ultimately is the quality of life in our city.
So we don't have a time limit in our response? No, but I'm gonna rein you guys up. I just want to make sure. And brevity is always appreciated.
Thank you.
Uh, Dawn, what I'm looking for, I don't know if you heard, when, I'm looking for, just very quickly, we're not looking for, you want to serve. We know you want to serve because you wouldn't inject yourself in this process otherwise. So what we, so what I want to know is what you bring to the table in terms of your background and what your issues are. But just a minute, please.
I'm Dawn McMahon. I'm the executive artistic director of the Pythia Arts Foundation.
Of the what?
Pythia Arts Foundation, spelled P-Y-T-H-I-A. It is an umbrella nonprofit organization for the programs of the Pythia Dance Company, the Phoenix Rising Homeless Project, and the Oak Tree Arts Center. All are programs that I created. They're all programs I did research for. They're programs I am collaborating with other nonprofits in order to further develop. And I work out of my home. It's a storefront live workspace on the corner of Twenty-Third Avenue and East Twenty-First Street.
So what are your issues? What, your top three issues? Just the bullet points.
I keep hearing public safety, and I'm not seeing it as public safety. That, that connotes only thinking of the police presence. And even in talking with the police, there is more that is needed. So that's, number one priority is bringing the police together with nonprofit and service organizations in a way that is more effective. That we are a unique city with a unique cultural history, and that that needs to be taken into consideration as we move forward.
And what are your other two?
The way the budget is handled, it needs to be changed.
How so? What do you mean by that?
We need to find other ways to fund our programs so that badly, direly needed programs that serve the underserved, let alone the rest of the population, are, are supported. Like, for instance, our libraries. And actually, I'm, I'm already starting that process. I'm finding a, a way to get the friends of the Oakland Public Library more funded, taking away some of the funding priority from the city of Oakland because it's so unstable.
And what is your third issue?
Uh, the third issue has to do with making sure that our focus is on community development in all of these arenas. I look at the mayor's efforts to have the one night out, the neighborhood night out, and give small amounts as awards to nonprofit organizations. That's just the tip of the iceberg. We need to be bringing nonprofit and for-profit organizations together. We need to be changing the focus of the city of Oakland of one of desperation and clying, trying to take money from, oh, through parking tickets and, not parking tickets per se, but taking the, the cars from impoverished people that can't afford to pay their parking tickets instead of finding other options, and looking for innovative revenue sources. And I have some ideas around that.
Okay, we'll get to that.
Okay.
I'd like each of you to start by helping me understand your understanding, starting with you, Shelley, if you don't mind, of what unfunded liability means to you and how it plays into all this.
Unfunded liability? Well, as a small business owner, unfunded liability means that there is programs or sectors that, that are not being taken care of and handled appropriately that can potentially be a problem. So it's, to me, it's simple. I mean, it's, it's clear, unfunded liability. And I don't know how else to, to say that.
Yeah, unfunded liability to me means is that, that, you know, we, one is we have some responsibilities as a community, but we are not able to fund it. That's as simple as I can get it to.
Mario?
Unfunded liability is the process of the current elected leadership to throw down the can down the road to our children for the debts of today's people.
Dawn?
Uh, unfunded liability is what is left when you decide a budget upon a budget with some programs that are not covered. And, uh, as we've seen, has been used in order to get the working class and unions and people who risk their lives for us to cover it and take care of it.
Uh, Dawn, starting with you, though. If you could explain how it works when it comes to retirement benefits for employees in the city?
In what way?
What does, how's the unfunded liability relate to the retirement benefits in the city?
There have been cuts. There have been a lot of cuts in the past few years that I've been watching happen. And it's the responsibility of this new blood coming in to get the revenues up and to get the programs back and to get, people should not be working without that, without retirement benefits. And it's our responsibility to do that. I'm not someone who's going to be sitting and accepting budget cuts. I'm gonna be the person like I am now, hitting the ground every morning and going out there and fighting for it. It's what I do with my company. A nonprofit organization where I am the accountant, the bookkeeper, and the grant writer.
Mario?
Sorry, ask the question again?
How does unfunded liability pertain to the retirement benefits in the city? And what's the relevance here?
So the relevance in terms of money is the, you know, we have several funds that are unfunded. You can be from the medical sector or from the actual retirements, and you have those two big ballooning deficits that are increasing every day. And basically, that's what happens. We make commitments to employees, and those employees not only are awarded salaries, they're also awarded current benefits, but future benefits when they retire. And there can be two types of benefits. The medical benefits, and there can also be the actual financial benefits that people receive. I don't know if you're asking also the question to expand, why would I do, or just that?
Noel, I'm trying to understand what you understand about it.
Yeah, so...
And how it plays into all this.
So we have five-hundred-and-twenty million dollars on medical benefits that are unfunded. Four-hundred-and-ninety-four million dollars on PFRS, which is the old existing retirement fund that the city has before they transfer all of the employees to...
And how much is on PFRS?
Uh, PFRS, I think it's four ninety-four. And I, I used to be in the budget advisory committee as of a year ago, so, you know, we get those numbers. And on, on the medical benefits, I think we have five-hundred-and-twenty million dollars. Those are debts that are due. What the city council had done this year is they decided to borrow against those debts. I think that there are policies that you can make today in order to make sure that you make those debts goes, goes, you know, basically lower. I think that the governor's proposal is a good way, is a start into making sure that we do some of those things. I'm a proponent of not taking holiday pays. When the economy goes up, do that. Bringing down slowly the assumptions in some of those returns. I think this year is seven and three-quarters. Bringing those downs. And I think those essentially will start paying down some of that. And frankly, we just got to start paying the principal, you know, on a, on a yearly basis. I don't think that we have a principal payment right now as a, as a actual plan for the city. And one needs to be developed. Otherwise, we're going to, in ten, fifteen years, have a nightmare in our hands.
Noel?
Yeah, you know, it's, it's real clear. I mean, it's, for me, it's, it's very simple. One is, and we'll, let's be specific, the, the police. All right? We, the city council negotiated a legal agreement between the police union and the city to include in the pensions. You know, I think that the issue that we have is, you know, a good number of our police retire at fifty-five. But when you retire, you had, get a full benefit pension in terms of, just based on the fact what your salary levels are. And secondly, you know, your family's included. Your wife's included in that pension. And what the, what the district, what the city failed to realize in terms of the annual cost, the millions of dollars that we have to keep paying just to be able to maintain the legal negotiated contract within our police unit. And so that's where the cost, as the economy dropped, as the funding levels have dropped within the city, we're required to maintain legally to keep paying, to keep paying those high pensions that were negotiated for not just police, but for the other employees. I did an early retirement. I'm a CalPERS early retiree. So I know exactly how the retirement system works. And, and yes, the city...
Retired from what city?
Uh, from the city of Oak. One of my daughters got in a car accident, so I basically her caregiver, and I had to do an early retirement. So the reality is...
How old were you when you retired?
I was fifty, I have fifty-five. Yeah. So, so what happens is that, um, what happens is legally the city is obligated, but due to the budget situation that we're in, one is you're required, based on the agreement, unless you renegotiate the agreement to, to, to be able to work at an arrangement with that union so that, so the union employees can continue to be employees and the city can survive. That's, that's, and we have a good number of examples, not just here in Oakland, but throughout the state of California, as well as school districts.
Shelley?
You know, I think it's important that we, we take care of what we need to. But I think, I've been thinking through, right now with this economy and with us not being able to fund our retirement system, it's always important to maybe visit a rainy day fund to put aside when times get better. And that way, we know that we can at least be paying into the retirement system.
Okay, but, but let me bring back to unfunded liability to play in, to retirement benefits.
How do I play, repeat?
How does, how does the unfunded li, what is the relevance of the unfunded liability and its relationship with retirement benefits?
You know, maybe I'm not as detailed as I need to, to be on that. I'm committed to preserving the general fund to make sure that the city has enough money for essential services. I mean, I, I don't know how I'll stand to that one.
Let me ask you folks, during the last negotiations, and this is sort of, you're shouting, we'll work back this way as now. During the last negotiations, the city gave up or gave back a day, a furlough day. So as you were following it, right? Was that a good move? Shelley?
Well, if we speak to the staff, it was, it was not. I mean, a lot of people are on, on tight budgets as it is.
No, no, they, they, there was a furlough day, and they eliminated...
Only returned it, I'm sorry, I heard it. Well, yeah, I mean, it, it, if it works for the city and it pays back into, I guess it would have been.
Noel?
Okay, just to be clear on your question, the city, you know, we currently have about thirteen to fifteen furlough days when the city of Oakland employs. All right? So what you're saying is that the city, that through the city council, they, they took a furlough day off their list.
They eliminated one.
And was that a good thing? Right. I, you know, for me, it's, for me, it's a good thing if you're able to maintain a balanced budget. All right? Because those individuals, I mean, right now, we're at the bare bone minimum. We have three thousand employees, including firefighters and police officers. So right now, when it, when it comes to, to whether either maintaining your parks, your libraries, and so forth, I think it's, and as long as you stay within your budget, and, and, and I think it's, it's an okay thing to do.
Mario?
My take on giving back the furlough day is that furloughs actually, frankly, don't work because they don't get away from the work. They just basically defer the work. So sometimes I gotta go to Oakland and get a business license, and I can't because the cities, city, city offices are closed. So it actually doesn't generate revenue for the city. It actually takes revenue away, in my opinion. You see that happening in terms of some of the other revenue generating units for the city that don't operate on that day. So I, actually, I'm not a big fan of furlough days because of that reason. I think that you, if you have to balance the budget and you have to do it in such a way, you have to get from concessions from the, from, at the bargaining table. So you start there. And I think it's very, very important to make sure that we bring back services to the city. And that's the one reason why I don't agree necessarily with furlough days.
So what concession? When you say you need to get concessions at the bargaining table?
I mean, we're talking about real concessions, salaries. We're talking about benefits. Those are the things that are discussed at the bargaining table. And so, you know, those are direct talks.
This was one of the ways of saving money.
It was. But it was almost like, you know, moving musical chairs, trying to hit it. You know, they were just saying, well, take the day off. But it doesn't, it doesn't take the work away. And the cities are still not provided with the full value of the day's work. And that's what I'm concerned about.
It's an easy emergency strategy to deal with your budget. That's what a furlough is.
So I guess I can interrupt other person from speaking.
I'm, I'm good. I, I heard what you said, Noel. That's good, but, you know, but, but, let's not get into lots of back and forth. It's a little hard for me to keep track of my notes. But don't worry, you know, let's, let's not, let's not get this in, you know. I want to discuss policy. I don't want, yeah, or in terms of attacking each other.
We're not, we're not.
No, no, I'm not saying that.
You're right. I'm sorry.
I know you weren't. Dawn?
There should have been more thought and effort put into finding other revenue sources and other sources of income, other ways of dealing with this, developing nonprofit programming in certain areas so that you can get foundation support for the city. That should have been taken into consideration before furlough days were even started because it sets up a whole environment, it's in, in the city, first of all, that things are falling apart. Uh, and this, uh, uh, culture of violence that we have right now existing in the city is a part of that. It's all coming together. Every, we, Ubuntu, we all affect each other. We all exist here together. Uh, they're, they're not over there in the corner doing gang violence. Uh, also, um, it makes it incredibly dysfunctional. It, it brings down the quality of the service for the city of Oakland. Uh, they're overworked. There's way too much to deal with. And then it also sets up a, a state of resentment that I've come across quite often in City Hall because of that. I, I, it was a bad idea to begin with. And this whole idea of, of, uh, charging more and trying to...
No, I, I got you.
Okay, okay, all right.
We are concerned for mandatory board policy about the state, the state's finances. We think the city is in deep debt frankly. Its unfunded liabilities for its retirement programs. About two-point-two billion dollars, rough numbers.
Do you mind if I take notes while I'm doing, while we're talking? Okay, good.
Two-point-two billion dollars. It's on a payroll. These are rough round numbers.
Great.
It's on a payroll of...
Great, because I'm, I'm maybe this...
Three-hundred-and-forty million dollars.
Three-hundred-and-forty?
Yeah, so basically, you're almost seven years of payroll in unfunded liabilities for retirement health and pensions. And what that represents is the unfunded liability for benefits that have already been earned. Not for future benefits, but for benefits that are already earned. In other words, they should today have two-point-two billion dollars more than that, right? So it's been committed. And as years go forward, it's just deep. I think, Mario, you sort of into that, this with the notion of future generations. It's against that backdrop that you sort of look at giving back a furlough day or whatever. Because, you know, and by the way, we're not, they're not paying the full cost going for, they're going deeper in debt all the time because they're not paying, they should be paying on the retirement health so that that amount's getting bigger and bigger. So I guess my question to each of you is, have you thought about this? And do you have any ideas of what to do about this? Um, you know, and you, you, okay, if you want, go start it out, Mario.
You know, I actually have because there's no easy answer in this. And, you know, as, as I listen to you and as I listen to other folks and as I read more and more and more, I actually frankly become scared of the, of the doom and gloom that is to happen with this financial liability issues. And my numbers were even short in terms of what I thought. But then I started thinking, well, what do you do? You, then you have second tiers for new employees. Right, so in terms of salaries, level of benefits, and commitments you make to those employees. Then I thought that that could be a good approach to start, but it's not the only single approach. Then I said, no holiday pay. We have good returns, no holiday...
No holiday pay? You mean no, no pension holidays?
No pension holidays, excuse me. Let me be more clear. No pension holiday days. And so when we have that, you know, you, you mentioned in another, another, uh, you know, serious that perhaps even reducing the estuary returns, you know, to be more realistic.
Well, that would, yes, that's true, but that would, you realize...
That, that increases the, the actual, but, but it, but it doesn't, not necessarily a bad thing. I mean, when you're... That, that increases the, the actual, but, but it, but it doesn't, not necessarily a bad thing, I mean, when you start actually paying the principal down. And that's what that does, it forces us to start doing that. And the other stuff that I've started thinking is, is this concept of real life accounting, I said, you know, real life accounting means this to me. You have the salary, let's say a hundred thousand, you have the current benefit, let's say twenty thousand, right? And then you have the actual cost for pension, you put it as a line item and you actually do the set aside. That's a different type of accounting, which the residents will now have to be faced with the true reality of, you know what? This is the real cost, it's no longer just a promise to the future. And that's what intrigues me, and there's going to be some very difficult decisions to be made by this, by the city council. But I think a combination of those things and many others, perhaps, are the things that are gonna move us forward, including this real time accounting, where you actually have to start being prudent and fiscally responsible in terms of how you budget for those pensions. So I think that that will have an impact in terms of the reduction of services currently. But ultimately, I think it would also have to come from gener- more gener- generating more revenue to actually accomplish this. But the residents are going to now have in front of them the reality of what it is, instead of just not thinking about it. Because that, no one is really thinking about it, so that's my take on that.
Anyone else?
Yeah, you know, you know, the, the reality is, is it has to be negotiated, all right? Cause there are, like you said, there are liabilities, there are legalities involved, okay? So it's not, it's nothing you can just automatically do based upon the power that you have.
Okay, but let's assume, and, and that's.
But let me just get me to my point.
By the way, there is one thing coming up, well, you don't have to negotiate, we can talk about that. But for the most part, you're right, but, but what would be the roadmap?
So my, my thing is this, all right, one is you, you must maintain a certain level of services for your residents, that's one thing, all right? Secondly, I agree that, you know, perhaps in certain retirement plans, they were too, too generous. And considering where we are today, we're gonna have to make some serious adjustments together. There's gonna have to give and take, uh, you know, at both sides of it, because we do wanna keep people employed. At the same time, we wanna be able to grow the city. And we cannot grow the city with you and I arguing and fighting, debating, striking and so forth, so we have to grow together, we have to grow this economy. The question becomes, how is Oakland positioned to grow? And that for me, that's what is the, the economic development strategy that the city of Oakland, from the mayor to the city council have agreed upon to, to position Oakland to be competitive. And I don't think that has been clearly defined, right? So, so for me, it's, it, you know, that, that needs to happen immediately. We need to have a plan and how do, how, how am I gonna be able to compete with San Francisco, San Jose and the neighboring school districts? What is the business that, that I can say, well, can be attracted to Oakland and to grow in Oakland for the future generations? And, and so we can have a more solid economic base and not so dependent on government. Cause government, you and I know government funding is gonna be on the decrease for the next couple of years, if not, you know, generations. So there, so to, to me, that's the bottom line. How do I maintain the economic growth so I can be able to offset some of my liabilities that perhaps in future councils negotiate it? And, but, but also, we, no, the other.
Let me ask you one question.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, you're going there, do you think that this is a problem you can grow your way out of?
To, to grow my way out of it? I think that's, that has to be a priority. Okay, that has to be a priority, we need to grow Oakland. And I think that you, and you can put it so, when I talk about economic development, I'm also talking about homeownership. Cause homeownership in Oakland, you know, it's extremely important for, for those homes to stay, for the business, for the residents to have a place to live, to do business, to continue to be employed and to maintain order within our neighborhoods. Cause that's part of not only safety, but that's part of economic growth, and that's part of the neighborhood life that she talks about. So I think those are all part of your strategic plan, but you can't have one without the other if you're gonna offset your, your unfunded liability.
Yeah, let me, let me go over to Shelly and then I'll go back with you and go to Don first.
I understand that we have the unfunded liabilities and everything we need for the city, but I'm about growing, retaining and expanding businesses. That's the only way that I know that we have to bring some revenue into the city. That's the problem with redevelopment being taken out, there's absolutely no way that we can fund certain general funds, general funds. We're eight, I'm about bringing small businesses to grow our city. And I, I agree with Noel, it is about growing the city, it is about being creative and, and thinking outside of the box and bringing, bringing those type of solutions to the table. I mean, it's gonna be one of eight that we have to work together and, and develop these strategies to be able to, to look towards the future. And I believe existing businesses, you help them grow, bring in new revenue. That brings in new revenue, that helps us keep the essential services that we need within our city. Being on the ground where I'm at now, it, it's been a hard work just helping small businesses just get some type of funding through the city or even some attention on permit process. If we help new businesses come in and grow existing ones, we can bring that revenue and look towards the future. I believe we can grow, I believe.
You can really grow out of this problem?
I believe so.
You believe we can?
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, you will, and let me let Don go and then we'll come back to you.
Small businesses need to grow and develop, that's not going to happen as long as we have so much violence and prostitution. It's all, and it's all work in hand and glove? And I, I strongly urge, as I have in every single one of these debates, that we look at the ability, first of all, for the city to enable the nonprofits that support the programs to be further developed. And work on that so that, as I said before, like the libraries, like, uh, parks and rec, uh, there are a number of factions in the city of Oakland that have supportive nonprofit organizations, they're not, that are not.
So you think nonprofits will be able to get, get you out of this problem?
I think that's part of it, the other part of it is that, um, nonprofit service organizations and all of the violence is, uh, based in drugs and drug addiction and, uh, all sorts of, uh, issues around racism and classism and, uh, so nonprofit service organizations, uh, provide an opportunity and an understanding and a way for someone who's come out of Santa Rita jail repeatedly or San Quentin to actually come in and work with people who have been through what they've been through and come up and pay taxes and have a real job. And I, I think, having attended the substance abuse counseling certification program at Merritt College, I'd say that that's a necessary step. And that that's, but only a small part of diminishing the violence, I, I think it's, it's complicated. But we need to have the for profit.
And what I'm trying to understand is how you get out this unfunded liability.
Right. The four, the nonprofits that exist right now don't function very well. And that's part of the reason why there isn't a lot of funding with the friends of the Oakland Public Library, for example. There's, there's a functionality issue with the board. And we need intelligent for-profit business people going in and helping them do the fundraising. And as I said before, it's about community development. And this way, support programs in the city, okay? Supports, yes, that have been cut, like for instance ESL courses, right?
I get, I get.
Okay, and that, in that, cuts back on the money that is needed to run those programs that is taken from the city of Oakland, and that can be put somewhere else.
Mario.
I wanna go back.
You've been shomping on the.
I have, it's like, come on, guys, you know, I'm a business owner, so I know what a dollar is, I know what twenty dollars is in a note. Two point two billion dollars is not a little money. And this city's budget is three hundred, maybe eighty-four, maybe three hundred and ninety million dollars. If we were to shut down the whole city today, do nothing but pay into the two point two billion dollars, we won't even have enough money to do that. So how do you grow yourself out of this problem? And this is what I'm saying, it's, it's a multitude of things. It includes the ability to do things like negotiate for different benefits for the future, but it doesn't compute to the benefits that you already have committed to. So it is a lot of money, there's no way that we can just say, oh, we're gonna grow out of, out of this problem. It's two point two billion dollars, that's serious money. And so that, that's the thing that, you know, everybody talks about the, the sound bites, but it's the understanding of the gravity and the severity of this problem that causes me sometimes to cringe.
Can I get your cue one to respond to him?
Sure, go ahead.
All right, all right, look, you cannot grow through government, all right, that's a reality. You, you cannot, you cannot, your unfunded liability cannot be paid through government funds, that's a reality. So I think that what has happened in Oakland, okay, let, let's be real clear. The median age in Oakland is thirty-six years of age, twenty-five percent are under the age of eighteen, right? So where, where is Oakland going economically, right, with that population group? So, so for me, it's very clear, look at your old Tribune building, who's in your old Tribune building? It's an incubator for small business, right? And Mr. Young, what, his name, whatever his name, he bought that to build incubators. You have young people going in there to start up businesses. My young, my, my recent graduates from Cal and Stanford, that's what they're doing. Their, their future's a lot different than yours and mine. I love manufacturing and I think Oakland needs to return to that, right? And, and within my district, we still have some manufacturing.
So how does this play back to the unfunded liability?
Okay, so the lot, the unfunded liability, there has to be some negotiations to go across the board, that's a reality. Cause we cannot meet that two point four, two point two billion that you referred to. It's gonna take some time for us to get out of that, but I do agree with the next generation that we cannot continue to offer the same packages that we had offered previously, I agree with that. And I think there's some, some acceptance to that, and there's some reality to that, but I think what we need to do at this point is be able to keep people employed. Be able to keep people employed.
Where, where are the exceptions to that? You said.
Well, no, we cannot, we cannot offer the lucrative pension plans that includes your wife and children for the rest of your retirement years. That's a given.
Then you said, but there are some exceptions to that.
Right.
What are the exceptions to that?
There, there, those are negotiated items that need to be renegotiated. Now, in terms of the next generation of employees, then I think that's where we can negotiate down in terms of what is your health benefit packages. Cause what a lot of districts have done nowadays, they'll give you your salary and they'll give you a certain amount so you can buy your own health benefit package, right? And so where, like Oakland is still stuck.
I totally, I guess what, here's my, here's what my question was. I heard what you're saying that there're gonna have to be changes, but then you said, but there are some exceptions. And what I heard you saying is, there are some people who, exceptions to making changes. So I was gonna say, so, so what I was trying to understand is, who would you leave out of the change?
No, 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 then, then you, then you heard me wrong.
Okay.
Okay, all I'm trying to say is that there are groups, take police for example, and fire, and some of the other unions within the district, we need to negotiate, we need to negotiate, uh, an agreement that allows you to stay employed, but at the same times allow the city to continue. And, and those are just realities being faced across the coun- across the country, and I think Oakland is gonna have to do the same thing.
Um, it's a good discussion so far, um. What do you, each of your thoughts on gang injunctions? And let's start with you, Don.
I'm completely against it. I, it's against our constitutional rights. Uh, I talked to George Galvis, I talked to Nancy Madell, there's a committee that they're forming, there, there's a book that they read about some, uh, resolution that was created in another city and, but it's, it's a complicated issue and.
So I was gonna say you're opposed to them?
Yeah, very much so.
Okay, I just, I just, I just needed to, just real quick, read on where each of you were.
Okay.
Okay, Mario?
Quickly for me, I oppose gang injunction because it's not the fiscal prudent thing to do. Um, you start with a list of thirty, you expand that list to a point of three hundred, and at one point you may even extend a list to three thousand and really what are you enforcing? I'm not for policies just for the grandstanding of policy, I think it's a distraction type of policy. If I have an extra million dollars to actually effectively get a gang injunction, I'd rather hire, uh, personnel that will keep us safe, police officers, um, than to go in and claim that gang injunctions are effective. And when people come back and tell me, oh, two gang members are associating with each other, well, guess what? When the two gang members are associating with each other, that's a crime, prosecute and put them in jail, right? Investigate, and ultimately, you know, it's not like they go away, they just don't go into that block. They go to the next block with the gang injunction, it's not effective, so.
Yeah, I support gang injunctions. I think that, you know, one is that Oakland needs all the tools to control safety, to deal with safety. You know, from the curfews to the injunctions to the, whatever it takes for us to make our neighborhoods safe. I, I currently serve and one of the founders of California Youth Outreach. I brought that group from, from San Jose to Oakland to work with gang specific youngsters. And in my discussion with those youngsters that have been involved in gang activity, make it very clear, there, there are those gang members that are extremely violent. And we need to be serious about that and deal with those, we know who they are, we know who they are. And, and so we have to deal with them in a whole different way. So for me, gang injunctions for strict, for strong violent offenders, I, I support it a hundred and ten percent.
Shelly?
The gang injunction's just a targeted strategy. Do I think it's solving the crime? No, it's just being moved out of the safety zone. I mean, I, it's a good tool for the safety zone itself to give the police, um, all the tools necessary. I believe that it's, it's a good.
I'm leaving because you're cutting me off a lot more, you're cutting everyone else off and you're giving them a lot more time to talk. And it was really clear on the press release and how it was slanted.
The press?
The, the one that the Oakland Tribune put out about, um, the blurbs about each of us, it, it really made me.
I, I have no idea what.
Okay, well, it really made me seem like a lightweight, and, and I, I walked into this uh, not sure how it's going to be taken, but I'm, I'm not being treated fairly, I'm not being treated the same as the other candidates. And I have important points to make.
Well, it's your choice whether you wanna stay and participate or not.
Well, are you going to treat me fairly, are you gonna stop cutting me off after the third sentence? I have done a lot of research and a lot of work for years on some of these issues, I'm not up on the budget stuff, I'm learning about that, I'll admit that and working hard on that, but there are a lot of issues I know stuff on because I'm actually out there in the field working with the people.
Well, it's your choice whether you want to participate or not.
Are you wanting to treat me fairly?
I think I am treating everyone fairly. You're welcome to participate or not, I think I am treating everyone fairly.
Because I'm not interested in special interest groups, endorsements, I'm not. I'm not, that's not why I came here, okay?
Shelly, you wanna finish up real quickly on, you think, you, you, they're just targeting, you don't think it's solving the crime?
I don't think it's solving the crime, you know, I, I'm more for long-term violence solutions, long-term strategies. I think it's more important to focus on it.
So what I'm trying to understand is, so you're opposed to them or you support them?
Well, I mean, I support the tools that are given to the police, but I, I am not for the, the, this specific gang injunction cause it's just a little.
So you don't support gangs? So as I understand it, oppose it, oppose it, support it, oppose it, do I have that right?
Right.
That's correct.
Right.
If there's newfound money right now in the budget, well, before we, before we go, we, we, you know, before we go to budget questions again, you know, because we're, we are getting short on time here. Let me just, let me just ask you guys, cause we gotta finish up the next one. What are the other key issues that each of you see that, you know, in just a minute or so, what are the key issues that each of you see that we haven't discussed that I should consider and we should consider as we make this decision? And let's start with you, Shelly.
The other key issues, I mean, for me, it's about economic development, it's about bringing the, the businesses up within my district. I mean, it's, it's important that we continue to work with the people and see, you know, all of the, the things that are not happening and then bring the businesses up. You know, I'm, again, I go back time about retaining and, and growing small businesses, but, but beyond that, I'm about collaboration and partnering. You know, I, I want, I'm pushing a lot towards law enforcement and private security collaboration to protect our corridors and, and our business corridors and our residential corridors to become the eyes and ears for our police officers. I'm about quality of life, giving, you know, a district office.
Are there specific policies, you know, I, I hear what you're saying, but are there specific, again, are there specific policies that you would advocate? Those, I hear what you're saying, but what I, what I'm hearing are superlatives. I'm not hearing specific policies, are there specific things, you know, real quickly, that you would advocate that we haven't discussed?
Oh, we've discussed it all, we focused on your policies.
Yeah, I, I think that one of the major issues that touches across the board is being able to stabilize our community through homeownership. And right now, what you have is you have banks that have bought up foreclosures, you have investors that have come in and bought up homes. And, and the reality, using my neighbors for example, the ones across the street, they become blighted. They're irresponsible, no, let me, let me get to the policy issue, can I get to policy issue?
Well, yeah, what I wanted to ask you to do is tell me, so what does the city councilman, should you do?
So the, the policy issue becomes this, one is if you're a bank owner and you're the investor, you need to be held responsible that the properties you did buy, you maintain them. You maintain them and when you do rent them, you maintain, they, they're, you're required not just to let them become blighted and neglected and wait for the economy to turn so you can make a dollar out of selling those properties.
So you'd say requiring homeowners to?
Requiring the bank institutions and the investors that are buying the properties in Oakland, these homes in Oakland, right? And they're, they're being irres- irresponsible by creating a blith in the community by the neglect of the property. And, and then when they do rent it out, the neglect of the property, that creates a whole different atmosphere in the neighborhood. And, and that's what's happening in my district.
So what would you, what would you?
So what would, I would recommend as a policy development that for those institutions or individuals that have invested and bought these homes, that there be required, one is to, to, to maintain those properties up to code, which means not only the, the environment on the outside, but on the inside, that if you go and rent it out, that you must keep your properties up to code.
I, I think the city council did a good job in establishing a policy that requires now every blighted property, every owned property, every foreclosed property to be registered with the city and now maintained. But specifically, in terms of policy, I will move to take the exemptions that banks are afforded when they do a foreclosure, a foreclosure sale. The exemption from paying the transfer tax. So it's not a new tax, it's rather taking the exemption away from paying the transfer tax. That's one, the, the other two areas that I will.
You would take away the exemption, the transfer tax exemption for?
For closures.
For foreclosures.
Yeah, so, you know, in two thousand eight, nine, ten and eleven, we had ten thousand eight hundred and thirty-three properties foreclosed. I think the value of that transfer tax is close to twenty-two to twenty-five million dollars a year. So it's, it's a big policy change. And, you know, and it would, it would mean that we would take some very special interests on, but I think that it's the right thing to do and it's not a new tax, it's a tax that is there. If you and I buy a property in the morning and sell it in the afternoon, we pay that tax twice. So we're not exempted.
So what you're saying is for foreclosed properties, they should not be exempt from the, from the transfer tax.
And, and certainly the, you know, my biggest drive is in terms of, big ideas in terms of revenue generating. So those, like foreclosures and additional user fees, perhaps on airports, similar to what other cities have done, the, to generate enough revenues to pay for the things that we need. And so those are the ideas.
Great. And the things that we haven't covered so far?
Yeah, and policy, you know, policy proposals that we have, that you would put forward that, that we haven't covered so far.
Yes, the use of the city council as a watchdog for, and getting personally involved with the city, which we have not seen yet. For example, with the police department and getting in there and seeing what kind of program that they have and, and talking to them about that. Going into the schools, also, the grand jury reports on departments that are running a bit nefariously. We need to crack down on them.
On, on the departments, not the grand jury report.
No, 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 yeah, and again, that's all part of a way that the city's running right now. And the use of the arts as a wonderful way of getting the Occupy movement moved to another level of contribution to the city and inspiration, which is something I'm championing right now. And also as a source of revenue, a really nice juicy source of revenue for us. There, we have no theater or dance here, it's very, it's very, very little. Our Oakland Ballet is just in shreds. And that's all a part of the feeling of being here. And being able to build and develop and, and the violence, it's all a part of quelling that and developing.
Folks, thank you very much, we really appreciate it. You know, it was a good discussion and, you know, we covered a lot. And I appreciate you all taking the time.